Yeah, City Council Special Meeting. Today is July 15, 2015, and time is 5:40. At this point, I'd like to open up the public communication so I know what you should speak. You may use the approximately three minutes.
John Rios, I was going to say right here that we have the Rome project again. You know, you guys have to open up your eyes up. You know, we, as citizens, I don't think we're just going to give the land away again. We need to put it into the ballot in November to see what the citizens want. We can't just, yeah, okay, here, take it. And now this thing out. We're not giving them taxes from now, we're not giving them nothing from now. Eventually, what are we going to do? Give the whole city away? It's better not that the city over there owes so much money. We need to get some government money. When some of the council people, you guys have to say, okay, that enough is enough. What I'll do, I'm going to go back to my neighborhood again. I'm going to talk about that. So we're talking, we're talking to people. Most of them are voters. You know, we did get a few people in the ballot. That's what I did.
Okay, thank you very much. Ken, what about the public education?
Yeah, Ken, one citizen, concerned citizen. Well, you know, when we speak, we're at this advantage because we don't know what these spin doctors are going to talk about until we hear it. And then it's, we can't make a comment. So we just have to go by what we think is going to happen and what we hope doesn't happen. My two big concerns on this project, other than the fact that we've given them everything but the combination with safe. And hell, they might have that too. But we have the parking problem, which I'm very aware of parking problems. And the fact that we don't get property taxes, which is going to strain our police department, our fire department, the sanitation. That money's going to have to be paid up somewhere. And the taxpaying citizens of Baldwin Park are probably going to end up paying that. And the, all these hundreds and hundreds of people that move in and they move in with no property taxes. That's going to put a strain on us, on the taxpaying people, as well as your taxpaying people. We're all taxpaying people. But, so I just want to hear what this spin doctor is going to say.
I live in Baldwin Park. My biggest complaint, nobody wants to give the city of Baldwin Park tax money. They're dependent to pay for it all. We keep telling you people, time after time, we're giving land away. This is the city of give me everything and I'll take everything I can take from you. 2.8 million or whatever amount of million we're going to put up front for this project that you guys are presenting. Where are we getting all this money? I thought we were touch and go. But it seems like every time we come to a meeting, you people give money away. At first, you say, just give the land away so the citizens don't have to worry when they think we do this. Now we'll give all that tax money, who'll give them that too? Who's going to pay for that? Every resident, small business, police department, parking recreation, everybody that lives here pays for it. That means us. This council not working for all of us. Do they give you people your land free? I asked a month, number of months ago, give me my property free, flat street. You know what? They said, go down the street. You know why? Because 2.3 million or whatever you're giving away, you're taking what you're charged a lot of. Will boost up the lighting, the farming, everything. And you know what, you people, you city council people, enjoy that. You love the taxes to them. Every city in this country does the same thing. And you people are doing the same thing. It doesn't matter if we tell you don't do it, you do it anywhere. Look at all the people over here that are going to pay taxes. Then you wonder why people move out, businesses go other places. The project you got going back here, why are we giving them that money? If they got money to build that project, they should pay taxes for that property. You won't, you won't, I'm going to put in a proposition to you people that you take care of my taxes. You got money to throw away, then you might as well go ahead and help me too. And every other citizen that lives in Baldwin Park. Do you guys think that's fair? You give somebody 2, 3, 4 million dollars to build a building, that we're not going to get nothing out of it for years and years. It doesn't make sense. Think about it. I went to a special meeting and you guys can afford to pay me, but you sure as heck can afford to give 2. some million dollars to some corporations. That's bad business. I know you're saying, he doesn't know business.
Okay. I want to be where I need to see everybody. I'm Mr. Carey, former resident of Baldwin Park. Now, I don't understand how to give the land away to a corporation. And then there's another 2 million or 2 and 1/2 million dollars. Where's that coming from? That coming out of the general fund for these residents that are going to have to pay for this at some point? And they're saying they're, they're going to pay it back. What if they go tally up? Then you don't get anything. Did you stop and think about that down the road that this, the so-called nonprofit goes under? Or dissolves or becomes another LLC or that? The city's just out. That land belongs to these people. It belongs to the residences here. What right does the city council have to give that wood and all that? Be it low income housing or anything else for that matter? What are you giving away? Has that been any tax money for it? Will you do like their utility taxes? Why do they do this at 3%? Can they give it up to 6% while it is over in the median? Or 7 and 3/4 while it is in San Bernardino to help cover the shortfall? Isn't the city far enough in the hole? With the retirement and all the other stuff that hasn't been paid, social security and things like that? Why are you digging the whole deal? I don't, I don't understand that. And it's low income. So that's not going to help anything. The people that are here, they're low income. And you're going to make it a mecca for all these places to come here. Baldwin Park's giving everything away. You didn't learn anything from Walmart. What was that, 27 million dollars? The biggest corporation in the world. And 27 billion, million dollars to Walmart for that land down there. And the bonds for millions. What happened to that? They stayed as long as they had, then gone. It's a slur they had, they had over here, they had things before, they didn't support it, and it went under. They had all these incentives and they're all gone. So why are you, and then you got 3 bays and some of their own company. What was that? No more giveaways. Let them pay like everybody else has to pay. All these people have to pay taxes here. They're going to have to pick up the shortfall. Put this to the city, the majority on the city council. Forget about your political futures and worry about the people that are here. Because they're the ones that are going to have to pay for the shortfall. And if this place goes under, nonprofits go under, they get caught up in tax things and they ended up liquidated. And you could lose that money, or rather they quit. How are we going to get the money back from the retail? When it stops renting? Rent, the space has to be built with people willing to pay those high rents. Otherwise, how are you going to get money from something that's vacant? Don't you have enough vacancies in this city?
Mr. Carey?
Over this place?
Mr. Carey? Thank you.
Good evening, Frank Tunnel. I have the Rome Corporation proposal from March 14, 2011. As everybody said, the land was zero, which we understand to the redevelopment, which we lost our ass on that 30 million dollars. Parking structure was supposed to be 96 spaces. They coordinated down to about 46 till I raised, holy heck, at the planning, got it up, I believe around 70. Don't quote me on that. That's still not enough. Because as you found out on these parking spaces for all the apartments down here, it's not enough. People don't own one car in, in the city. The, also, what I find really interesting is our city operates on that it's prevailing wages, right? Well, in here, underline, our financial scenario does not include prevailing wage cost estimates. So that means you're using low cost wage for, for workers here in our city. Great, that was a good job on reading that contract. And Shannon, not say anything on you because you weren't here at that time, okay? So, then we go on to deferred developer fee. 442,000 we defer. Doesn't say how long. It's about 30 years if you figure it out. Now, everybody doesn't understand, but let me clarify. City soft money loan, almost 2.8 million dollars. You might as well give them the loan. It's over 30 years that the city's doing. Now, we've been fighting for the police to get their raises and everybody else to get their raises and keep our, our budget going up. Keep our reserves up. Where are you getting the 2.8? Now you're going to knock down that 7 million you kept bringing up. Now you're going to knock it down another 2.8. So you just keep knocking it down because you build things that cost the city money. That you have to learn in business, what you do is you make money, you don't give money away. And people don't seem to understand this in this council. It seems that fill my pockets and I'm happy. But if I don't get my pockets filled, your project's no good. And it happens many a times. And Pacheco's one of the classics to damn all that. We have the other thing, the tax, and this is great, tax revenue. Due to the mixed use thing, tax project, we're going to have a 6,000 square foot project, 75 by 75. That project's going to give us 11 to 12 workers. And that's going to bring in our revenue. City revenue, 11 or 12 workers bringing in sales tax? Are you serious? That's one shop, one big shop. Is it going to be retail?
Mr. Tallow?
I'm sorry, I saw your face, I could you reply? Thank you very much.
All right. All right, so we're going to go ahead. We have the open session today, this is going to go with the Rome Phase 2, so we normally have a presentation. All right.
Oh, today's the 15th. Yeah, today's dated in the mouse.
Okay. I'll try to keep it on point. Thank you so much for your time tonight. This is really, more than anything, I hope, an opportunity to talk about how we can explore feasibility for the second phase of a project that has been really contemplated and underway for a number of years now. I see this as a renewed kickoff and I hope that we can solicit feedback both here at, at this table as well as from the public. Moving forward with the ultimate ask for tonight being that we can come back before you with a refined concept for an ENA during which period of time we will simply explore the feasibility of what type of project would ultimately make sense. So, as a quick overview, I'll hit that touch on the outline from Phase 1 and from Phase 2. The underwriting assumptions that we have, open that up for questions. I will draw your attention to the picture on the right, just as an overview of where we're at.
I'm sorry to interrupt. I just want to make sure I hear all your words.
I think you need to speak into the mic or, okay?
How about I speak up?
That sounds good, I can hear you right there.
Perfect, I'll, I'll go ahead and speak up.
Okay.
So, what, what we have on the right, outlined in a teal color, this is essentially the first phase of the larger project that was identified several years ago. And where the emphasis will rely on tonight is the area that's in red, which would be the completion of the project currently in construction. So with, with this, calling back into mind, early 2011, 2012, we identified the site. We talked about the possibility of transit oriented reinvestment in downtown Baldwin Park. We talked about the concept of placemaking. We talked about what could be done to generate revenue, but also provide housing and really make best use of the transit center as well as the transit center parking garage, which had been constructed. We had multiple meetings at that time to go over scoping. We ultimately entered into an ENA for the entire area to see what made sense. Is there a housing component? Is there a retail component? Is there a public component? All of that was identified and ultimately resulted in us identifying Phase 1 for an agreement. And under that agreement, we said, we'll go ahead and kick off through the purchase of city land, the retail and the residential component that's under construction right now. We went through environmental studies and we did entitlement exercises contemplating both phases. And ultimately have constructed, commenced construction and are about a third of the way through construction right now. So, jumping into the original specific plan, there were a couple of goals that we had from the very beginning. The first one being that we wanted something mixed use in nature, had stronger design components. That it activated what we would call, at downtown Baldwin Park, at the intersection of Main and Ramona. That required placemaking. We know that we had City Hall right here and that there was a disconnect between City Hall and Ramona. And how through a project could we reintegrate those two components? We said that we were going to limit it at height, it was going to have a transit focus, which meant limitations on parking. That sustainability would be an important component of this, that whatever we built, we wanted it to be environmentally friendly. And at the end of the day, we resulted on 70 affordable units as part of the first phase. Those economics were our equity as a developer that went into this project. The low income housing tax credits, which are federal tax credits, were a critical piece. You know, it's the lion's share of the funding for the project. We raised conventional financing for the balance. And then city loan participation, just to clarify what that is, is that there was no subsidy of fact into the project. There was no donation. But that through appraisal of the land, a fair market value was paid to the city to acquire that land. And all other fees or any other element of the project related to the city was packaged up into a loan for which a fair market rate was paid. So the city now is in a position where they're generating income through the payments on that loan.
Excuse me, you're talking about Phase 1?
Yes. Yes, so I just want to clarify, there was no giving of the land, there was no subsidy that was offered to the project in that form. It was very much a public-private partnership. So, just if I could for a second draw your attention up here. As City Hall, Transit Center, this area is being developed now. And really the crux of being able to, really the crux of being able to link City Hall to Ramona was through this public plaza concept. And that public plaza is a combination of Phase 1 and Phase 2 to complete. Essentially becomes arms that embrace the same public plaza. It's also, in looking at Phase 2, we know that this is going to be a project with no back door. It's going to be visible from all four sides of it. We know that there are plans for improvement here along Main to improve the downtown area, moving north to south to calm traffic. And we know that that improvements can't take place until redevelopment of this portion here takes place. Well, thank you.
Center, center part.
Got it. So now what we're looking at is an overhead perspective that's just massing to show how all of this comes together. City Hall here, Transit Center parking, the first phase. You can see the second phase here flanking the corner. And this is consistent with the amassing that we've seen from the very beginning. This here showing the break, the relief between the two projects. The establishment of a proper public plaza linking City Hall, opening up views in this direction to Ramona and, and becoming a destination space at the pedestrian scale. For everybody who's on transit going in this direction, everybody that's going multimodal from the train station to the bus station or to their car, it becomes a destination. So it becomes a destination of retail. Looking at it here in plan view, you can see how there's a relationship to what we have in the first building in Phase 1. You can see the public plaza here. You can see along Main, a softening in this sidewalk. We generally have large sidewalks, nice pedestrian friendly areas. And then it breaks down right here near the most important intersection in downtown. And by softening this with angle traffic parking in here, moving the building back off the street a little bit and maintaining retail not just along Ramona, but along Main too. You start to increase north to south pedestrian connectivity in addition to that which is going east to west already. Programmatically, we're looking at only 45 units. And what's of particular note here, mixed income, is primarily a market rate apartment development. Okay? So that means that we would not necessarily be rent restricted. It means there would be no governing law that said there would have to be a tax exemption. And all of the retail, just as all the retail in Phase 1, would still be a tax revenue generator for the city of Baldwin Park. It's just in this case, the units would be as well. The zoning is consistent with the specific plan work we did in Phase 1. Still 4 stories over retail, still lead for homes gold. We would be targeting on the sustainability front, only instead of having 5,000, 6,000 square feet of retail, we're talking about 10,000 square feet of retail, which is an increase in the amount of retail over what's there now. So it's not merely a replacement of income generating land, it's, it's, it's an increase in that intensity. 85 parking spaces for only 45 units and the retail. And really seen as an architectural leakage, the keystone, if you will, of this project bringing it all together. Linking the architecture of City Hall with the architecture that exists here in Phase 1. Underwriting assumptions that we have so far, like any project, there are costs, the project, in this case, it's land assemblage. The city doesn't actually own the land in Phase 1. They own a very, very small portion of it, actually. And so the impetus is on us as a developer to go out and assemble the land from private owners. Okay, this is work that we've already commenced and are underway with. There's a small portion at the back of Phase 2, which I think is used for a, maybe some surplus parking, if I have that correct. And that is the land which we would then be acquiring from the city at a market value. Then, of course, there are construction costs, financing costs. Sources for this, again, starts with us as a developer, putting in our own equity to make the deal happen. There would be a city loan participation as it relates to the land and as it relates to some of the fees. But all of that, just like in Phase 1, would be structured as a market rate loan at market rate interests that we would pay. Timeline, we would be ultimately asking for a 12-month ENA, but no, anything. Extensions, the idea being that while we're under construction on Phase 1, we have the opportunity to put together Phase 2, that we can complete this, we can come back to council with a, with a full concept that makes sense, that the public can comment on. We move forward with entitlements, submit to TCAC and SIDLAC next year. And if all goes well, we could still break ground next year. So, in a nutshell, that's the project. I know it's very high level, really looking at next steps being exploring further underneath an ENA. Because without an ENA, it's going to be very challenging to complete the assemblage with the other private property owners.
Can, can you expand a little more on the parking on Phase 2?
Parking on Phase 2?
Yeah, how are you, what's the plan?
So, the parking that was proposed is 85 units, is what's shown in the programmatic. And that's a mixture of parking along Ramona immediately in front of it. New parking we'd be completing along Main, remember? So we get people out of their cars immediately adjacent to the retail, that's important, it should pay a calms traffic. And then a small number of spaces coming out of surplus spaces in the garage, which we would then compensate. We would be purchasing licenses for, for the city.
But you're saying 45 units, so where do the residents that are going to live in this?
That would be the, they would get a license to park in the parking structure that we would, we would compensate the city for.
Okay, so then if I'm a resident, I got to walk from the parking structure to my house, over on the corner?
That's right, that's right. In transit oriented.
I just don't make sense to walk that far.
So in transit oriented developments, it's pretty typical to have an extremely low, if any, parking requirement. So this is really seen as a benefit to a tenant that they could procure a license. It would be a revenue generator, I guess, in some regard for the city. The only alternative that would exist on this site, because you don't want to put a large parking structure right there in the middle of your downtown, would be to go below grade. You would be going many stories below grade and the project would become financially inflexible.
Well, okay, give me an example of a project that the, that the parking and the residence or that part part. Do people roll rent? Homes that your parking lot is so far away from you.
In transit oriented developments, it's, it's not uncommon.
You have an example, like where would that?
Well, I need you to type, yeah, sure, I'd be happy to send you a list of projects. I can also tell you that in large projects, the location of a parking structure relative to somebody's units could be twice as far as that is.
Like with downtown Bryan, has that type of situation? With parking structure and residential units?
Okay, let, let me ask you, are residents who are concerned about you giving away land, they're concerned about, they're saying you were not, you did not honor the last contract because you do prevailing wages. They would give you a loan, I mean, how do you explain those, those concerns there?
You know, I appreciate the opportunity to respond. I think it's a very important point to note that there was no concession of land from the city of Baldwin Park in Phase 1.
But there was no concession of land?
It was, it was acquired from the city of Baldwin Park. So we purchased the land from the city of Baldwin Park.
For Phase 1?
For Phase 1, yes.
Can you explain, how did you purchase the land?
The land for Phase 1 was purchased through the formal housing agreement. We procure, we obtained the right, the option, if you will, to purchase that land, provided that we paid a fair market value. That fair market value was determined by an independent third-party appraiser. Full report was done, that information was shared with the city and the city's consultant to review for, you know, appropriateness. And ultimately, whatever that dollar amount identified was, was the amount we were obligated to pay. And that's exactly what we did.
And was it had a buyer to along the city, the city up to it?
The city was instrumental in making the first phase happen. Because when we stacked up all the various costs of the project, they came up to X. Okay? And with all the available financing and all the money that Rome had to put back into it, because in lieu of getting paid, Rome is taking our paycheck and putting it into that project as well to make it happen. That's how those affordable deals work. There was still a gap. And the city stepped up and said, if at a fair market value, we're paid for the land and if you pay me a fair market interest rate, we will loan the money to the project.
What is the interest rate?
It was AFR and so it'd be in the ballpark of 3%. I want to say. I, I don't know the exact.
Do you have this presentation that you could send to us and look at, an email please?
Yeah, I actually saved it to this desktop already and I'll just leave it there.
Well, that doesn't help me. But if you could please send it as an email to us, I would really appreciate it. You know, right now it's 7 minutes of the presentation that I would really like to be able to digest and report on and ask some questions with our planning department and support.
Yes, no, I'd appreciate that. Again, I see this as a starting point to a conversation.
And I agree with Councilwoman Bouchette, although parking is a very serious issue. I am concerned as well, and I agree with Councilwoman Bouchette, I know that people walking long distances with their children or, and I think there's been times in the past where I have brought up in this in particular, there are either condos or townhouses that they built in variety. And that's one of the reasons why they didn't sell. Because they not only lacked the parking, but it was really far and they had to go up several stories in order to get to the main part, from the parking structure with their children or senior citizens to go up to the living.
They did not have an elevator?
They did not have an elevator, so it was very difficult. And so I want to be able to see what your, what you can do about the parking.
Sure.
And it is an issue, parking on Ramona, Medelo, all our streets in Baldwin Park. It's very, the parking situation is extremely serious to where we've actually started permittinging some of the streets for, for homeowners or the residents. So if you could please send that to me and also explain about the parking. I'd appreciate that, thanks.
Absolutely.
I mean, is there another plan for parking other than walking that far? What would be the other options that you could?
Well, I think from a parking strategy standpoint, there's two types of uses that we're trying to provide parking for, right? There's a retail component and there's a residential component. And it seems like we're in agreement that how we're addressing the retail component is satisfactory. But then the question is, from a residential standpoint, how far is the distance? What's the path of travel? And how does that stack up to projects that are maybe more typical? It's like, this is a very small project, very small project. You know, I mean, this is 20% to 10% the size of a typical multifamily market rate project. It was very small.
You're still looking at over 100 people in there?
I would say that we about, right?
Probably about 60, 70, probably.
Right, so size wise, but what I'm, what I'm getting at is a typical multifamily. Right, so size-wise, but what I'm getting at is a typical multifamily project that you would see. The location of the parking garage to some of the units may actually exceed what the location of our parking garage, the units are. It just seems like a far distance because they're not connected.
All right, but if you could send it to us, please, I know that you're pressed for time, apologies for that. But if you could send that to us, I'm pretty sure if I follow Councilwoman's, we'll be okay.
Yeah, obviously.
What is your affordable marketing plan? I mean, how do you manage the families that are too fortunate to be in the affordable housing? How long do they stay there? Do you transition them to other housing?
So affordable is a very broad term, and there are various degrees of income targeting. On a project like is being proposed here, this would be a twenty percent set aside at fifty and sixty percent AMI rents. So essentially what that means is it's pretty close to moderate income. And so these are people that clearly they have jobs. This is not permanent supportive housing. This is just a restriction on the rent, so that doesn't increase their levels that are unsustainable. And I would say the typical duration in one of our units is no different than the typical duration that they would have in a market rate unit at that level. So these are long-term rentals. And the less turnover there is, the better it is for us and ultimately the better it is for the city. Because it's when units turn over that there's a loss of revenue. So keeping them occupied is what's most important. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, so affordable housing for you here, the other units that you manage other than this one here?
Yeah.
How many of all the properties you own are affordable housing that your company manages now? Not that you sell it out to somebody else.
Sure, currently, our company has twelve hundred units on construction throughout the state of California. Roughly half of those are affordable, roughly half of those are market rate. So we're very familiar and operating in those spaces. Typically on the market rate side, these projects are constructed, they are stabilized over a period of time, and then they are transacted on. Essentially, they are, they're divested, they're sold. On the affordable projects, these are seen as long-term core investments, minimum fifteen-year hold. Even when it's mixed income like we're proposing for Phase Two, we're involved in them for a very long time. We have about five thousand of those units that we currently have.
There was a question about prevailing wage that you did not do in the other, in Phase One? And I'm not sure if it's good or not, but how are you going to do it in Phase Two?
So there are a lot of specifics surrounding prevailing wage and when it's required and when it is not. And the nature of the project for Phase One, it was not a prevailing wage project. That doesn't mean that we aren't, that we aren't utilizing union or in many cases even paying prevailing wages. All it means is that it's an open shop project and everyone is welcome to bid on it. I could provide you a tally. We spoke previously about at least looking at the statistics of how that worked out. But a combination of union companies, minority-owned companies, women-owned enterprises is not an insignificant component of construction of Phase One.
Okay, did you use a lot of local businesses for Phase One?
We advertised locally and all local firms were more open to the bidding process. More often than not, what happens is that even if a locally owned firm isn't selected, because there may not be a lot of locally owned firms that do those trade works, it doesn't mean that people working for that company aren't local residents.
Is there a way to figure out the percentage?
The easiest way for us to find out would be to survey the subcontractors that we have, and we're happy to ask that information. I don't know what the quality of information we receive, we'll be able to do that if you like.
Okay, so residents are saying, you know, gave away land and get it all tax-free.
So as we discussed, the city didn't give away the land. The city said, we will not give away the land and you will need to pay us the fair value of the land, which is what happened.
Which is what?
For Phase One. For Phase Two, keeping in mind that the city's portion of that is less than a third of the project. And it would be the same thing for that portion, we would be compensating you. There is, that I can contemplate, no opportunity for the city to develop the land that you own in Phase Two. It's too small, there's no access to it. I mean, it's used as a surplus parking lot for maybe a dozen vehicles, I'm not sure.
Okay.
Oh, you said something, you had another question. Property taxes.
Do you pay property tax?
Right, so the property, the retail component of Phase One does pay property tax. By nature of the low income housing tax credit, there's an obligation to exempt it from property taxes. That's just the nature of the type of project it was. And without doing that, it would not be eligible for the tax credits, which were instrumental in financing them. On the second phase, because it's an eighty-twenty split that we're considering right now, it means that you would pay at an eighty percent ratio of property taxes. And so that would be a direct increase over what's there now, because all the retail that's paying taxes there now would be replaced with an increase.
Can you give us an approximate how much annually that would be? Just eighty percent of the property tax?
I completely got the projection, I would envision that.
Well, I'm not asking you, you would have to give us.
The ENA phase is really for us to identify all of this information and come back to you with something worthy of an agreement with the city. At that point in time, we would have detailed information and financial analysis.
I would like to see it as soon as possible.
I can put together a projection, but I, with the understanding of that.
That'd be great, just an approximation. I'm not asking you to give the dollar amount to any, you know, but just an approximation.
It's easy enough to do, sure.
If you know how much, you've got forty-five units, I'm sure that you can figure out eighty percent of that.
No problem, plus the retail.
And how much of the total space that you're proposing?
Ten thousand square feet.
How much of the original?
That's out there currently, and it's just under half last night.
Okay, is it, I'm sorry, Shannon, is this informational only or is there?
Yes, this is just informational only.
Oh, okay. There's no direction, it's just.
We can bring back that information, if the council would like to bring back possible ENA for you to consider.
Thank you very much. The item number two left, we'll go to another future city council.
Okay, that's fine.
They were going to go into.
We have all the people here. Everyone's here. Give them their seven minutes.
Okay, sorry about that, go ahead. Sorry about that. We'll be quick. I'll be here for five years. Okay.
My name is Richard Alontory and I'm a consultant for the Hadley Toyota Company. What we like to do is we like to have Marcus Son, the owner, make a presentation. Real estate agent that has been working with Mr. Son will also speak about the types of businesses over a period of years that have been interested in moving in there as well as businesses that have not wanted to because of a variety of factors, primarily the caltrans the fact that they could number a fee of property that made it adverient inviting for certain companies.
I'll be fairly quick, my name is Marcus Son. I'm the owner of Hadley Toe, and Hadley Toe moved to the city of Baldwin Park in two thousand and five. We are currently renting at one-two-seven-nine-three Garvey, which in two thousand and ten, we purchased the old California property. When it was proposed, we purchased it from the bank. The property is directly across the street. And I didn't know that it's going to be a presentation, so I just brought something like this.
Can you show this? Well, the way you have this. In front of you.
So basically, Hadley Toe. So currently Hadley Toe is ready for property, directly across the street. And this is a property that I purchased in two thousand and ten. Since then, when I went to the city to pull my license, I was told there was a moratorium that was passed in two thousand and six or seven that didn't allow me towing service or trucking companies in Baldwin Park. Since then, I've been trying to go back and forth to see what I can do about getting this property permitted. And I was, I've been making my mortgage payment, my property's taxed since two thousand and ten. This site, the site's currently vacant. Since then, other things have changed. The redevelopment has been discontinued. The retail use of Garvey is not, is not really a retail use anymore. Since that twenty-foot wall, mud block, is the ten freeway. We also lost twenty feet on Garvey. So it's mainly like little side street. So currently now, we have a potential tenant, including myself, that can move into this property. Sun State Venables is also on Garvey. They rent construction equipment to the public and to construction companies. They would occupy the back portion of the property and Hadley Toe will occupy the front portion of Garvey. And this is kind of an idea we have planned for redevelopment. Currently, the property has, you know, homeless people breaking into it every day. We've called the Baldwin Park PD plenty of times. They've set the building on fire a few times already. So it's been a big mess, been a financial burden on myself. And I'm still trying to meet you guys' city. I've been in your city since two thousand and five, and I feel like I get no personal courtesy whatsoever. So we're here today to show this to you and see what your thoughts are, questions are.
So that wall looks out the way to the side, right, out of porch?
Correct, here's, there's currently a wall there. There's a template setback with template landscaping.
Do we do that wall?
Correct.
I can add, this has been a great decision, so this is too, because I'm really happy.
Almost every week. Baldwin Park, at least, is probably twice a week. We can only run across the street. So we see, when we see the homeless guys walking across the yard, we generally call.
No, I was just going to talk about, I know it's been a problem that area because of the crime, the homelessness, and there's a lot of drug activity. I mean, I know there's prostitution and all the things that we don't speak about, but it has been a nuisance to our city and scenario that's been turning up a long time as well. I think that at this point.
It's a nice project.
It's a nice project. I mean, I just keep thinking of how much money we're spending in sending our police officers and our resources to take care of this business. I really prefer something there than not, because of the problems that we've been having. I mean, the only thing I can say is, I like the project, but I also would like, because I know there's some residents that have some concerns in the area, I would like to see a lot more trees in front of the walls right there because that's my only concern. Because the residents have concerns about having this.
Well, this is, this is just the beginning, but the trees and the vines will grow up and over the wall. So we have a burned ten-foot landscaping, and then after at least six months, the vines and the trees will cover the wall completely.
And that would be my goal, because we want to also make sure that we're respectful to the residents that are concerned that's going to look like deep business. Making it a little bit more, just appealing to the eye would help in that regard.
I'm a curiosity, how close is this concept, is it?
Yeah, I mean, this had, this concept is a little small red brick building. This idea, the landscaping, the gates, the, there's currently a building on there now that's almost the same size of that building there.
Now, so you're interested in being on Garvey and away from the residential area.
Correct.
Your surveillance, I think, and lights and so for holding a building.
Correct, correct.
Because that's one of those places that sometimes people see something very dark and that's one of the reasons that there's so many break-ins and the homeless problem.
You guys, the absolute, I mean, you guys are already in the city. You're operating a business across the street. You're really asking us to just across the street, improve the property as much as we can. It really has been a nuisance to our city. And, you know, so I'd really like to look at how we can work with you guys to make that happen. I mean, you're already in the city, you know? And if there was a more frightening about bringing these two types of uses, I mean, I understand that, but you're here, you're here. For how many years?
Since two thousand and five.
See, I think the idea at one time, trying to improve that property made a lot of sense. And at that time, cities like Baldwin Park had the ability to use tax increment money to be able to provide incentives for companies to come in. Unfortunately, and caltrans, you know, obviously didn't do you a lot of justice in terms of your interest in trying to bring about changes in the area. Now you have a situation where, you know, somebody's got to take the first step. And, you know, I know that we would like to have a lot of things in our community that would make sense. We have the real estate agent that's worked with Hadley to see the types of businesses and the like that might be interesting to move in there. And maybe she could put you just.
Sure. Well, I think many developers are interested, but of course, when the wall enough, that was a huge turn. Also, I'm not sure if anyone's here, but there is a, there's a large power line on the property situated to the northwest corner, fifteen thousand square feet approximately, which developers find that out that completely determines right away. So those are out for those two reasons.
The other reason is, I'm curious, is it the aesthetics or is it other?
Well, it's many things. For the rental businesses that were interested, which from my information that the city, I think, was one of the uses that were fully supported. Once I rented the property and they saw the activity around the property and also the retaining wall, of course, we're not going to, those two factors, I never had interest beyond that, what I did that for. It actually got to the point where I would just have people drag by first because there was feeling the same team are not there. And I just don't really go over the side first. Of course, I knew the response I stayed yet, and I freely got to mark three years. I had a soccer field interested, but they would have required a permission use permit and there was some concerns to that as well. And I've had many, like, for example, landscaping companies, contractors, many uses that require outdoor storage, which of course all require permission use permit. And just based on the process with the city and feedback we got, the tenants and the buyers never wanted to pursue it beyond that, just because of the responses to the community funding out. So, you know, unfortunately, the way the property is set up is to make with land. So, you know, the uses that they're going to get are people that require outdoor storage, either vehicles or, you know, equipment or something of that nature. Sun State, who's located nearby, is already there. So they're very interested in getting another location here because they kind of run out of their location. So they've been interested for quite a while, and I kind of kept them hanging in the balance till we have a direction. But my communication's with them in their corporate office back east, they're still very interested to take half the property, and it looked very well for them. And, but since then, I've taken the property off the market and it's really, it's going to be kind of direction, I was, I was thinking of.
Let me ask, well, where's the limitations of the overhead, the electrical lines overhead? Does that limit what you could do on that property or?
Well, as far as development, yes, cities.
As far as your concept is concerned, is it?
Oh, I don't think so, because his building is on the other part corner. And then who's going to use the remainder for parking if I'm speaking out of turn?
Let me ask one question, Shannon. So the rezoning part, what is the impact of, if you rezone for them, I mean, is it just them? Or is it, how much of the area are we looking at, what is that impact?
If that type of use from the United States project would be a more challenging customer capacity, if we allow them to use within that zone, that means that that use would be actually permitted in all the zone, which wants to, like, set zone.
What's, like, what zoning areas are we looking at from? From the six oh five to West Cohina?
This property is within the industrial commercial zone, so you're looking at all of the industrial commercial properties that's along the freeway in addition to along Arrow Highway.
It's just specifically industrial commercial, it does like see, I guess.
IC. I'll, I see, yeah.
Okay, so does that mean, will I get another toll yard down?
You could, you could get an application for that, yes.
But ultimately, the idea is to allow the council to do whatever they need.
Well, how can we, can you limit it to certain areas or how do you?
You can't really do that.
So once, once, once we pass it, it remains, we can, so we can touch punch.
If you, if you did that so, it is permitted in all the.
It's permitted by a condition, at least we have discretion.
Yeah.
It also has certain requirements, specific requirements. If it's going to be landscaping or it's going to be a certain size of a building, instead of getting some onstrosity free story building, I think as long as we have requirements and it's left to the discretion of the council or the planning commission to decide that.
Well, I'm not sure that that's, if you're understanding what the question is, is that we're saying if we allow them to do a toll yard, we have a lot of empty lots along the freeway. in areas that could be more suited to retail, if we do this, you're gonna potentially have a bunch of tow yards all through the city, which is what initially we were trying to avoid by having these storage yards, you know, let's say RB storages or, or these truck storages, semi-trucks parking all in the alley. I mean, that's what you guys are, are looking at, is you're gonna have, would you want semi-trucks?
No, no, but that's not what I meant. What I meant is to have specific requirements that the applicant would have to fulfill. Like say, he's fulfilling by the aesthetics and so forth. And it would be up to the discretion of the council and the planning commission if we're going to go ahead to let them have CUP open up another yard. Let's just say that there can't be another, another tow yard for, I don't know, for five hundred feet or something. I don't know, there's a lot of different things.
I mean, look, what else maybe happens? Is you let one in and the other one wants to come in, and then they're gonna sue you, and you end up with this, you know, Shannon, that's why, that's why we did this semi-dive. Okay, so if I wanna go and buy land and do semi-trucks along, okay, along, see, you're shaking your head, right there by the Howard Johnson, in that area. Let's say I wanna park trucks in there, am I gonna be allowed to do that? Okay, so somebody wants to park, you know, large boats in the area, semi-trucks on the other side, another car storage on the other side, it's all allowed. Okay, but that could get challenged legally, right? Because that's what we talked about a few years back, when we did this ordinance, right? Because we didn't want to have all that stuff.
Unfortunately, look at, it's time shanked and what you attempted to do, great ideas, or what you wanted to do. But unfortunately, that was taken away from you by the state of California. And are you going to just allow a community to deteriorate and deteriorate without having some controls? And I don't think that Mr. Son is interested in taking away anything from the city. All he's saying is that, "I'm across the street, I have a legitimate business." "I bought this property with the intention of moving my business across the street." Right now, he has paid his taxes. He had paid business taxes, property taxes and the like. And he can develop his own property for that, that he was interested in accomplishing by the purchase of the property. And as a result of that, all you have to do is, is go down there. The ideas that I think that the city council had when they passed this was probably very good. But that was taken away. So they took away the, what you attempt to accomplish. Has, have you seen an increase in retail? Have you seen an increase in the things which one to know? The reason why is because of an action that was taken by Caltrans. And all that he is, that my plan is attempting to accomplish is to improve his property. And by doing that, it improves the aesthetic nature of it. Look at all, all cities, oh, sorry, all cities in, in California, especially in Southern California, are suffering from a problem with homeless, homeless encapments and the like. And to do that, I think, you know, wouldn't.
Well, I just thought, I mean, you and I have talked about this on several occasions, and, you know, my concern, I don't say you represent your client and you're trying to represent this property, but my concern is, and as we showed before, is, and I'm sure the same ideas that you do there, I think there's still, even though it's not redevelopment, there's still a lot of things that we could develop. We're developing one of the sites for the new hotel down the street. So there's still other developments that could come along, and I invite you to a different development there that I don't want you to see. There's not opportunities, maybe this particular site. But there is opportunities on the other one, that I don't wanna close the door on those because I can guarantee you that if this project goes in as a toll service, you're gonna have, you know, boat trucks and all that, semi-trucks coming in there, because we have that problem, and that's why we did this ordinance, to close it down. I don't know, Stafford coming with some way that, you know, that can convince me as a councilman that this isn't gonna be, you know, now this happens and now we're gonna have all these other types of developments that prohibit us to bring in the strong retail in that area. I might be open to it.
Hold on, let's do one more question, we're gonna move it out, because we got the other, other session stuff, we gotta move it out there.
No, I was just gonna say, I mean, and I understand your point, which I do, but I also see how bad that area is and unfortunately how the walls along the freeway, because I even know, you know, Mr. Terry, but I was who had a business there. It just killed the business when the walls went up. And so there is no interest to come behind the wall next to the freeway, so I'd rather have some kind, something in place where if people wanna do something, then at least we have some safeguards where we can make that street beautiful and aesthetic, you just please. Right now, you drive through there, it's like a ghost town in every single, might be not, I don't know if anybody here, but it's really ugly, all the buildings are dilapidated, they don't have any paint, they don't have trees, the sidewalks are packed. So we can have those safeguards, where we can say, this is what we expect. You know, so when you drive along the street, you at least see a little bit of beautification and a safe harbor in park. I think I would like to work into something, a plan where we, we have safeguard those, those issues.
Okay, so let's do, let's move it out for your next meeting.
No, it's actually the use. The use itself is not committed with any zone within the city, so it would be doing an amendment to the code to allow the use in the zone.
And you can get back with the, you know, like the permission process or that, I guess.
And we, we're interested, it's condition of use, we're interested in.
We would comply with the conditions. With all the conditions.
Okay, so here's what we do, let's go to bring it, are we meeting on twenty-nine, are we meeting?
Next meeting's August.
August, right, thank you very much, thank you. Alright, so at this point, I'm gonna go ahead, we'll move the op for in August, maybe the first meeting in August, we'll do a study session, maybe not have too much depth on it, so we can discuss this. Okay, alright, thank you.